Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for December 6, 2022. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Layland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Schwartz. Jelka.
Here.
White.
Thank you. Would everyone please join us for a moment of silence to reflect upon our actions today? Please join us in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, is there a motion for receiving the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? There is none. Public comments. Is there anyone in the boardroom today that would like to make public comments on something that's not on today's agenda? Okay, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to make public comments? All right, hearing none. We'll move on to years of service awards to employees with 20 or more years of service. Mr. Veder, do you have those certificates?
I do, and today we have a couple of employees from the sheriff's office with 25 years of service, Jeffrey Chase. Congratulations, Jeffrey. I'd like to congratulate you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And with 30 years of service, Mark Herbst. I thought you said you weren't as old as me.
Nice of him to notice, huh?
Thank you, congratulations. Thank you.
Mark, congratulations, Mark.
And that's all for today?
That's all for today, yes.
Thank you all, yeah, both, I said, for your tremendous service for 25 and 30 years, thank you. Claims and payments.
Good morning, Board. For claims and payments today, we're paying Summit Food Service for food service at the jail, a total of $25,937.23, and that is actually the only significant bill we're paying. Our total bill payment today is $116,517.09, and we are paying out of the Sheriff's 60-40 Fund, $269.04, and that, everything appears to be in order today.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. If there are no further questions or discussion, please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Jelka.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes. Thank you. Item five, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board, Kathy Nicholas, county engineer.
Good morning.
Morning.
Briefly, our crew, our secondary roads crews are out cutting brush today, this week, and then picking up garbage from the ditches. We do anticipate some weather possibly today, and then possibly Thursday and Friday, so the crews will be outstanding and plowing as needed. PCI has moved in, and they have begun work on that small revetment project, so I believe they are at the Brandon Road Bridge over the Cedar River location right now, and that should continue as the winter progresses. Can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else in the boardroom? No. Is there anyone on Zoom? No, thank you. We'll move on to item six, minutes approved for November 29.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Moving on to the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I'm assuming no one wants to remove any or have any questions for items on there, so please answer as your name is called.
Jelka.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes. Thank you. Contracts and agreements. Item A, resolution that the lowest responsible bid received from Aspro Inc., Waterloo, for Project FMC 0071675507 for HMA resurfacing slash cold in-place recycling on Beaver Valley Road from Butler County Line east 2.4 miles to Union Road, and Project FMC 0071685507 for HMA resurfacing slash cold in-place recycling on Washburn Road from Highway 21 east 4 miles to Highway 218 with a total bid of $2,770,309.98 be awarded and direct the chair to sign resolution authorizing the county engineer to sign the contract and to receive in place on file the contractor's bond and certificate of insurance as recommended by Catherine Nicholas.
Second.
And as I told you in my email, these bids were open by the Iowa DOT, the second Tu, third Tuesday of every month in November. Aspro was the only bidder, their costs were higher than we estimated just due to the increasing cost of the asphalt binder, the asphalt mix. This, these two roads, these two projects will be tied together, and we will be resurfacing about six and a half miles of roadway next summer, so I would ask that you accept their bid and allow me to sign the contract in your place.
Are there any questions for Kathy? All right, it's been moved and seconded, so please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Jelka.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes. Item B, resolution that the lowest responsible bid received from Taylor Construction Inc., New Vienna, Iowa, for Project BRS SWAP C007169FF07, bridge replacement on Pointer Road over Indian Creek with a total bid of $809,573.80 be awarded and direct the chair to sign resolution authorizing the county engineer to sign the contract and to receive in place on file contractor's bit, bond, and certificate of insurance as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer.
Second.
These bids were also open by the Iowa DOT on November 15. We did have three bidders in this instance. Taylor was the low bid. I sent you the information about the other two bidders. We've done a lot of work with Taylor, and they've built many bridges for us over the years. I would recommend that you take their bid, it's a good bid, and we'd be allowed to sign the contract with them and get working on that in the spring.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Kathy? If not, please answer as your name is called.
Jelka.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes. Thank you. Other business, motion that the grounds use requests for classical conversations to use the Blackhawk County Courthouse on Saturday, May 6, 2023, for a mock trial with liability waiver forms to be signed by all participants and guests. Be approved and direct the chair to sign the permission letter for same.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I don't know if, any questions for, I know Rory's been working on this, as far as you were, I think, were there some context made to the courts?
Yes, good morning, Board, Rory Giving, maintenance superintendent. This is the same group that had recently did a mock trial a few months back. What I can say is that was a very positive program. We did get good feedback. They left the building in good condition, so nothing, nothing negative to say. I think it was a very good program, so I don't see any issues with it on our end.
And we had.
Rory, appearance in place?
I'm sorry?
Do they have the insurance in place?
Yes, and then they also have waiver forms that was recommended for them to fill out.
Thank you.
And then we're just responsible for the security, and I think.
We'll provide the security, but they will pay for that security, so we'll keep track of the hours spent.
Great. Are there further questions? If not, this was a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The motion passes. Item B, motion to approve the 2023 Urban County Coalition, UCC legislative priorities.
So moved.
Second.
These were presented last week, so it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion that the holiday schedule for Blackhawk County offices for 2023 be approved as follows.
So moved.
I'll read them off. New Year's Day, January 2. Martin Luther King Junior Day, January 16, units 1, 4, 6, 8, and non-bargaining. President's Day, February 20, unit 5 only. Good Friday, April 7, 2023, unit 7 only. Memorial Day, May 29. Independence Day, July 4. Labor Day, September 4. Veterans Day, November 10, excludes unit 7. Thanksgiving Day, November 23. Day after Thanksgiving, November 24. Christmas observance, December 25, and floating Christmas holiday, December 26. Is there a second?
I made the motion, but I'll second it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought, oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Thank you, Tom. It's been moved and seconded. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. Resolution to approve the sheriff's lobby remodel project with an estimated cost of $500,000 to be paid for with American Rescue Plan funds.
So moved.
Nate, I got one question. We've been, or I've been asking of all the projects, do you foresee any increased tax askings once this is done, like hiring of an individual or anything else?
No, there's no additional staffing. In the, in the plans, there is space for an additional workspace, that's just because there was the room to do that. However, we don't anticipate any need at all to do that, so there should be no additional tax askings. The only thing, on the, on the initial plans, though, I did just want to point out, my initial, it was estimated between $566,000 and $623,000, then they came back at $585,000 for a little more specific, which is what I submitted, and I noticed on the agenda it was at $500,000, so I would just ask maybe if you could possibly amend that back up to, to make sure we cover the whole project with it.
How's the board feel about that? Do we want to, like I said, to not exceed 585, or do we want it to 500,000 and ask them to come back if it exceeds that?
Does this cost include the engineering fees?
Well, that was already taken out of the 60-40, so the, the engineering fees are not part of the bid, they're not part of that estimate.
And that was 20,000, right?
It was $22,000, I believe.
Thank you.
And I believe 15 of that has already been paid, or right around there.
What's the pleasure of the board?
What was the maximum estimate, Nate?
The initial estimate they had when we first started kind of working through it was, they were guessing between 566 and 623. Once they, once we got a little more definite with the plans, they came back with an estimate of 685,000, and I believe it was, yes.
585.
Or 585, I'm sorry.
Nate, what amount was turned into the committee for review?
585 is what was on the, turned into the committee, and that was what went to Baker Tilly.
And, and if we're getting nitpicky, it's 585,739.
Don't cheat me out of my 739.
I'll amend my motion to reflect the 585, 7.
I'll se, I'll second it.
So not to exceed?
Yes.
All right, okay.
Yeah, exceed.
All right, thank you. All right, any information, any more questions for Nate? Okay, we'll move, this is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Just a moment, please.
No, no, that's fine.
Jelka.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes. Moving on to item E, resolution to use American Rescue Plan funding to pay for mechanical engineering services necessary for the previously approved project consisting of updating the Conservation Administrative Office HVAC system for the purpose of providing a healthy and sanitary working environment for the staff and public that utilize this facility. Do we want Mike to go first before we make a motion on that? Okay.
Yeah, I possibly can answer any questions if you have those questions. This is the HVAC system that we brought to you and was, and it was approved at $250,000 some time ago. What we ran into is we went out for bid, we did not get any bids, and so, you know, it's a weird boat to be in. We have funding for a project, we don't have anybody to do the work, it's usually the other way around. But, so we needed to find out why we didn't get any bids and what we could do, because this is something that has, it really needs to be done. And so we started to reach out to some of the HVAC companies in the area, some of them that got the requests for, for bids or proposals, and we got, the general information we got back was simply the fact that they're swamped, that they simply can't take projects on. But we were lucky enough to, to get some information from, from a company, they got a little more in-depth, and it made sense, and that's why we're coming back and asking for the mechanical engineering. When we originally had people come and look at this building and, and tell us what, what could be done, that was clear back in September of 2021. And at that point, typically what these companies can do for a job this size, $250,000 sounds like a big project, but it's really not when you consider a lot of what they do. So they typically would just send one of their individuals in there for eight hours, 12 hours, maybe two, two full days, but they could go ahead and do these, these plans, size it, spec it, design it, do everything that needs to be done within their own system. But that was, and, and so back in 2021, when we had these people look at it, I said, sure, we can do that, no problem. That's why we didn't include any type of mechanical engineering part to our request when we originally came to the table to you. What we found out is the information we got back after the bids, we didn't get any bids, was the fact that they're so busy right now, they literally don't have, they don't have an employee that they can send out for two days to come into that office over there, start to design, put specs together, and all those kinds of things. Furthermore, they told us, they, one of the other reasons that they've stopped doing that is because they could send somebody in, they could give us their specs, another company comes in, they look it over, they, they have completely different sizing, maybe, brands of furnaces and air conditioning systems, things like that. So, so what we were told was we could send our guy and do all this work, which we don't have time to do, and then we wouldn't even get the bid because somebody undercut us with inferior products. So we said, well, so, so my question to them was, what will it take to get you to bid on this project? And they said, if you can get the mechanical engineering done by an outside company, a mechanical engineer, then, then it's all apples to apples. Sizing will all be the same, everybody's bidding on the same thing, brands will be the same, ductwork will all be the same, the design will be the same, and they're all bidding on the same thing. Then, they don't have to put their time into it, they just look at our, our proposal, and they decide whether they want to do it or not. They said that time-saving element would probably go ahead and entice them to place a bid. That's why we've gone this route, we're looking for permission to go out and get that mechanical engineering, we'll have to put it out for bid, and we'll see what we come up with. So that's what we're asking for.
Has this gone before the committee?
Is re. Tom, this is Mike trying to say, it hasn't gone before the committee formally. The, the, the general reason that we've gone ahead and sent it straight to the board is because of the fact that this is all, this is for the same project that already went to the committee. This is just now a separate engineering component of that same project. I didn't consider it good use of the county's funds to send this to the consultant, and further, I couldn't see how this would be any different than just, than the analysis that went into the bidding on the HVAC system to begin with. The committee can certainly consider it separately, but that's, it's going to be in light of the fact that we've already looked at a, a project for the HVAC system, and this is just a component of that.
Okay, I, I think it's a good project, especially if it does deal with breathing and so forth within the building. The only concern I have is anytime you talk about everybody's busy, Mike, that means you're going to pay 30, 40% more for a project that we would have paid for before. And it gets to the point, you know, do we pay that extra money, or do we wait? But otherwise, I think it's a worthy project.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with you, Tom, that's because that's, I think we're going to run into that, and, and the further we get into this, and the later we get down the road, yeah, it's, it's going to become an issue. But, you know, the possibility of spending $50,000 as opposed to us coming back.
No, 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 I didn't do anything. If I, maybe.
You're doing something now.
Anyway, i, if, if this didn't have to be a capital project in a budget, it would certainly be, it would certainly be helpful, from our standpoint and from yours, so, you know, that's what we're looking at. And we're looking at, you know, the information, we, we've reached out, we've tried to, tried to get a feel for this, we certainly believe it's going to run somewhere under, it should be under $10,000 to have this done. We would hope that it would be more in the $6,000 to $7,000 range, I can't guarantee that, and that's just for the mechanical engineering portion of it. As far as the bids, yeah, I, you know, I hope 250,000 will do it, that's what we've originally got approved for, so we're hoping that we'll be in that, that line, but we won't know until somebody bids on it, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Yeah, and it's unfortunate with the ARPA dollars, we kind of run against the timeline anyway that we either need to utilize them or, or not, so.
Yep.
Great. It's been moved and seconded. If there are no other questions for Mike, this is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Jelka.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes. Item F, discussion, Tim Youngblood zoning issue.
Linda?
Yes.
This individual called me last week, he's going to kind of go over a situation with planning and zoning on a neighbor. I called Seth and Eric, I, I don't know if they're there today, they said they were going to be there.
They are.
And we'll let Mr. Youngblood go through, and, and I told him we could put it on for discussion only and go from there.
Sure, and this is the first I've heard of it, so anything will be new information, appreciate it.
I'm Tim Youngblood. I live at 6830 East Worship Road. The property that went before zoning is at 6848 East Worship Road. The property used to be an old mill that went out of business. It went before the zoning board, January 19 of 2022, to give Corey Thorpe permission to sell RVs there at the lot. Everybody said he was a great guy, and so it was passed, but my concerns that, were that there's a dike behind the property that protects five houses and two businesses. It was built in the, after the 61-65 flood, when Waterloo built their flood walls and everything was done. By the residents and the two businesses all put their money together, built this dike connecting to the Cedar Valley Danger Trail on the north and the south to make it, protect them, and it worked all the way through 90, the 93 flood, saved all the houses. The 2008, it didn't quite hold it. 2016, it held it fairly well. At the meeting, of the zoning meeting, I, my biggest thing was that the dike be, since it's changing ownership, that it would be maintained and kept in the same conditions. And to read the parts of the minutes is, Youngblood asked if Thorpe plans to maintain the dike. Thorpe indicated that he would maintain the dike and entrances of his property, and is more than willing to share his contact information with Youngblood. And further on in the meeting, it goes, Youngblood noted his main concern with the dike will not be taken out. Thorpe indicated the dike will remain, and he will fix up the place. Well, since then, Mr. Thorpe has moved the dike. I have pictures if you'd like to see what he's done. But he said he was going to move it 40 feet, well, from the, my property line is, was 40 feet from where the dike was. So he ended up moving the dike, the 40 feet, which put it partially on, the dirt ran under the fence and through the property line. He never finished his work, and then I got hold of Seth on approximately September 20th or somewhere in there, and the DNR, because I went through the code for Blackhawk County on sensitive lands, and he was supposed to have a permit from Blackhawk County and engineering from the DNR to actually be able to move this dike, which he never did any of it. You want to see the pictures?
Are they pictures you can leave, or are they just something you want? Okay, that'd be great, because.
He did a very poor job of doing it. Here's the best line of the property line. He had a big burn pile behind his building from cleaning up from a previous person, and he ended up pushing all that debris into the dike. Here's another picture of the property line, and another picture of the property line where he pushed it through the fence.
And you're all right to leave these, so we can keep those.
And my concern is that he had a 60-day ruling from the zoning board to put the dike back in the shape it was, where it was.
And when was that?
He never did this.
And when was that?
He got that in, he has till December 12, so it would have been 60 days before December 12 to get it done. Seth has given him a 60-day advancement till April 30 to get it, because he said the ground was frozen. I asked Seth in an email if he went out there, or he sent somebody out there to see the conditions of the dirt, and if the work could not be done because of frozen. I have a video this morning where I stopped and dug the dirt right on my, on my property. It shows there's no frozen ground there at all. So I don't, I would like to know why he got an extension and how the zoning board gave him this extension to put it off till April. As you can see, it's not a dike anymore, and spring floods come, and that will not hold a spring flood. And being Blackhawk County approved this action of waiting till April, if there is a major flood next spring and that fails, and there's damages to the residents, wouldn't Blackhawk County be liable for letting him have an extension like that? That is one of my concerns. The other concern I have is, you got the RV zoning, and through that RV zoning, he introduced a commercial trucking to the site. He was running four to five trailers and three semi-tractors out of there. I called Seth and asked him if a commercial trucking, trucking company was covered by the RV permit, which he said is no, was no. So it was all, went through rezoning all again for the commercial trucking, and it was turned down by the zoning committee of adjustments. He was given till November 4 to end operations of commercial trucking there, and to this day, he is still operating commercial trucking on the site. He parks his trailers there, he puts his semis in the shed now, he's doing, he's trying to be very hiding it, is, you know, what I would like to say he's doing, is hiding it as well as he can. But I do have more pictures, if you want to see them, to show that he is still running a commercial trucking business there. And, I mean, you know, a man's word used to be, means something, but it just doesn't seem to in this situation anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Seth or Eric, did you want to say anything today, I guess, to add anything to it, or kind of what the process has been, or?
Yeah, yeah, in regards to the, the levy, I don't know, it was like 17 degrees that night, and I, I was just under, you know, the assumption that, you know, it wasn't going to pack well. I even visited with Jamie Knutson, our engineer, and tech, you know, generally when the ground's, you know, still frozen and not, you know, warm, the levy is not going to compact well, and that's the reason why I made that decision. No, I'm not a soil expert. No, I didn't go out onto the site. I don't have permission to go out on the site, I don't have any code enforcement powers. So discussed it with DNR, discussed it with Eric, and decided to give them an extension. I mean, the, the levy where it is. I mean, the levy where it is, you know, I mean, Mr. Tharp did agree to move it back within 60 days. He saw it still at 12th. But I gave him an extension. He said the ground's frozen and 17 degrees the day before and I was just under the assumption that if he did move it, that it's not going to provide as much protection as the one is now. That's why we gave him an extension. In regards to the illegal businesses, I, you know, I, I just I, I don't, I, you know, I went out to the site once, didn't note anything. You know, it's just hard for, for, for me to do permits, you know, do staff reports and other things. And also do the work I have to do on behalf of the city of Waterloo. I'm just a half-time employee, you know, I just bill by the hour. And so, you know, I mean, Mr. Youngblood, if he's got proof, that's, that's great. I, I don't, you know, so you know, that's why we're having this discussion today, you know, because it's up to the Board of Supervisors if we're going to do code enforcement. That's not up to me. I have zero code enforcement powers. All I can do is send letters. And usually I send a letter, they comply. I don't hear back from the applicant and basically so that's kind of where we're at now. So.
So no dispute at all though about the actions taken that Mr. Youngblood mentions? Those were the things that put in place as far as that extension and?
Yeah, you know, that, I mean, I'm, and then I, Mr. Little contacted me. He was, you know, wondered why we granted them the extension. That's why I did. I, I thought if you moved the levy, it wasn't going to compact well, just based on.
Hey Seth, I got a couple of questions. When you send these out, do you include the board so we know what's going on?
Okay.
Because I, this phone call last week, didn't have a clue what he was talking about.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll do a better, better job of that and, and, you know, because I grant extensions all the time for various different reasons and, but if the board wants me to, no matter how minor, wants me to bring it to their attention, I will. I apologize for not doing that in this case.
The other question I have is, I was also heard that he had other conditions that as he complied with, there's an addition onto a building. He was told to remove that because it was built without any permits. I understand that's not done. And also there was a apartment in one of the areas on the commercial site or whatever, and it wasn't zoned for that. He was told to eliminate both of them. From what I understand, they're both still there today.
That, that is, that is correct. Basically, you know, it's if, if Mr. Tharp doesn't do it, then we have to take him to court to make it. I mean, if that's the, if that's the route you guys want to go, we'll do it. I'll, full support of that.
Well, the thing is Seth, we can't make these conditions and then not make people stick to it. Otherwise, the next time they're, yeah, no problem, they're not going to do nothing about us anyway. So if we're going to set these requirements, we probably should start following through on some of this stuff.
Understand.
Sure. Well, it sounds like in this case, then there's code enforcement. We need to involve as well as legal counsel on what we do or how we go about making any corrections or if we can make some corrections on the timeline on those as well. I know that probably doesn't give you an immediate response, but, but at least that we can look into it further and see what's needed.
The dike was very important. Done on, all my, my dad and all the people that did it on a handshake and put their own money in it. It's been destroyed as of right now. On for a man who just wanted to gain 10 feet of property.
How long ago, how long ago was it that the dike was?
He should come up.
Oh, if he has more, whoever, I was going to say could answer that, when the dike was moved, when, what date was that done?
The dike?
Yeah.
When he actually moved the dike?
Yes.
It was in September or sometime in September.
Okay, so just recently.
But I mean, the, all these people went together back in the 60s, early 70s, put this dike up to protect all the property. And he did send a letter saying that he was going to gain 40 feet of property by doing this. If you go out and measure the dike from the fence line to where the original dike was, it's 40 feet to the edge of the original dike. And you can see by those pictures that he dumped it onto the side of the fence, onto the, it went through the fence and onto my property. There's no way that he could have maintained that side along the fence without wiping out the side of the fence with a cat and stuff. It's just, he basically has come into the neighborhood and he says it's my way or the highway.
The problem address is 6848 East Washburn Road?
Yes.
The other question too that I, Tim asked me is, does anybody in this room think it's honestly, the ground's going to be frozen in April compared to today? I'd almost have to say it's going to be frozen in April. So the extension really isn't going to do anything. When he had 50 days to do it already.
And again, like Seth said, we're not soil experts, but like you said, the ground isn't frozen at the current time, so.
I would just like to say that 50 days he's had so far, I'm a farmer. This has been the driest and nicest harvest weather we've had in years. He has had, the only reason he doesn't want to do it is the only reason it's not been done because he has had ideal weather for the last 50 days to have it done.
Thank you. Are there any further questions or comments, Mr. Little? Have you any more as well?
It's just, it's frustrating really.
Well, I appreciate you bringing it to our attention. I guess sometimes these are the ways that it's unfortunate, but yes, that we need to. Any other additional questions or comments?
No.
So are there emails or is there other communication other than this that we should be requesting, I guess, to Seth or?
Well, I could give you all, everything I have here. I mean, I could send what I have.
Oh, that's, that's, just so we can do it more thoroughly. So, all right.
One last question, Seth. I've read section on sensitive lands and that's what that land is. And when you told him that he could do some grading in his backyard, did you do that in writing? Yes, yes. You, and it's on record? Yes. Because I know there was a much miscommunication on that. But in, it stated here that he called it a dike. And in the Board of Adjustments meeting of the first time, he called it a levy. So he knew when he was moving it, that he wasn't supposed to.
Yeah, and we're gonna, I mean, this is complicated. We understand your frustration. We're going to tackle, we're just not, we're not going to just sit here and do nothing. We just have to come up with a solution. Seth is, we have Okay. And could we ask you to approach the podium when you speak and, and, and direct your questions to the board and then we'll ask questions of Seth. But we under, I mean, this is concerning for all of us because if we have a wet spring where we have flooding, I agree that what I see in these photos right now, this is not going to hold. So we're going to have to come up with a solution and we'll work on it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing it to our attention. All right, I would assume we should proceed into the work session for the Sheriff's 6040 Room and Board Fund unless someone chooses. All right, I know we don't have all of the supervisors attending, but give us the information we can. Thank you.
All right, Nate and F Jail Administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning. This is something obviously we've touched on several times in the past and here, a couple of weeks ago when we had a work session on it. We came up with, had my proposal and then Linda especially had several questions on it. Just some things that we could kind of put more in black and white on what we need pre-approval for. Earlier, I think it was last week, I sat down with Grant, Michelle and Billy and we kind of came up with some parameters that we hope you'll find acceptable, the one such as minor equipment purchases, janitorial maintenance supplies, minor repairs facility, those things. We thought maybe you would want to put a dollar amount on. I know, I think somebody in the last meeting threw out $1,000, but that wasn't anything decided upon. I'm just hoping to give us some flexibility to, if we need to get a new weed eater or make some minor repairs to the building, that kind of stuff, we'd have the flexibility.
Okay, I was going to say, one of my questions was going to be, what do you consider minor equipment purchases to put?
Things of that nature.
Weed eaters and things like that.
Stuff that we use out there.
So much less than $1,000 items?
Could easily be less than $1,000 if you were to go that route, yep.
Michelle, what do you think is an appropriate amount for such items?
I think $1,000 will cover most of what they do, but again, that's really up to the board. You have more history with it about what, what you want to pre-approve.
What typically is the sheriff's office considered minor, other than lawn?
Equipment. I was trying to think of things historically that we've needed for out there. Sometimes, I mean, hand tools, whether it be drills, lawnmower, weed eater, that kind of stuff out there.
I think a router came up.
Can you think of any other minor?
Okay.
Right out there, Mark?
Is there any of that in your current operating budget under minor equipment?
That stuff could be, Tom, but as you know, we try to keep anything range related out of the tax-based fund. So that's why we've always kind of pulled it out of this. So we're not drawing from an item that would be considered tax-based.
And the janitorial, I'm assuming the way Rory does is he puts a contract out for the, all the facilities that are doing it? So you're telling me he breaks out your portion for the range?
There, there is no janitor out the range. We clean it up ourselves. We take care of it ourselves out there.
Okay.
We have the garbage picked up, obviously.
Yeah, I thought Rory told me he had janitorial service out there.
No, we take care of that ourselves.
And minor repairs to facility, such as?
And again, if a door gets damaged or backed into, we do do some defensive tactics, training, that kind of stuff. If someone would happen to thrown into a wall or something like that, have to do some drywall repair, just and again, nothing I was thinking of specifically, but just the flexibility to take care of what we needed to, if, if it came up.
Target supplies has nothing to do with the range, meaning something different?
No, not, not the store target, like shooting targets, like the cardboard backers, the paper targets, that kind of stuff. So that's.
And those are used at the range though?
Yep, absolutely. That's, that's for the firing range, yes.
Nate, have you sent a, and I probably saw it if you have, did you send a list over on all this?
Yeah, this is on that email that I sent. Actually, I was, had it attached to the, the agenda request for today.
So this, this money will actually be spent before the board? Would you submit it to the auditor for payment?
Well, what we'd kind of come up with was items not needing pre-approval from the Board of Supervisors would be the utilities, electricity, water, sewer, internet, trash collection, pest control, the water softener tablets, the target supplies in the office supplies, papers, staples, whatever you need for that kind of stuff. Those things we'd had under there, as well as not needing approval would be, these items we're discussing where there's a dollar amount, the minor equipment, janitorial maintenance supplies, minor repairs to facility. And then the other thing where we had where we wouldn't need prior approval is any ongoing or existing contracts that we have, such as our pay software benchmark. We've got a corporate Zoom account, live scan service agreements and our DOC contract with Sarah Geiger.
And we're talking about the jail across street, correct?
Well, I mean, really we're, pretty much everything we're talking about is the range, obviously, the
Okay, I thought we were talking across street because a lot of that stuff you just mentioned is covered under either your general budget or Rory's general budget for the jail.
For the jail it is, yeah. That stuff's definitely on Rory's budget. Yeah, we're talking at the range with all that other, the other stuff. Obviously, the, the pay software, the benchmark analytics, that kind of stuff gets used over at the main building, but but those are contracts where we've put them again, just to ease the tax asking on that stuff.
And just for clarification, I noticed you had this in the last proposal and I think I questioned you on it, where it says to pay for unbudgeted operating expenses. Those are all budgeted operating expenses however though, right? At the, at one point in the year when we do budget, I suppose, they're not unbudgeted.
You're talking anything in that?
It says the 40% portion of the room and board will remain in the, in an account to be used by the sheriff's office to pay for unbudgeted operating expenses.
Really? I mean, we, kind of within our own budget, we budget for those out of that 40%. So we've historically done it. I don't believe there's anything in there that comes across as a, as part of an item for
Okay, well, that's what I thought.
Asking on, on the board, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's just something we've always kind of been self-sufficient within this fund.
Okay, great. And did anybody review of the contracts and services? Any questions on any of those? And then you want to review the items requiring pre-approval from the board?
Yeah, absolutely. Oops, I think I might have just minimized. That's again, tactical training equipment, we do have items for that, but if things come up that like, for instance, right now, I think we're looking at having to spend several thousand dollars on new dry suits for our dive team. Those type of things aren't specifically budgeted. In the past, we would have gone ahead and just paid for those out of that 40. Moving forward, that would be something where we'd come again and say, hey, we need, I forget, $12,000 to $15,000 for this. Those kind of things that, so while those, most of those items in there would be considered budgeted, but there's things above and beyond. A few years ago when we added rifle, patrol rifles to all the squad cars, I'm pretty sure we paid for that out of the 40%. So it would be those kind of expenses where, while we obviously do have weapons and ammunition as a, as a budgetary item, this is kind of something that comes up once in a while above and beyond that we typically use that for. New contracts or maintenance agreements, we don't really foresee any of those, although that would be something like, Tom, you'd kind of asked me about why we, you know, with the envisioned architecture, why we didn't include that in, in the past. It's just something we kind of paid for out of this fund. Now, moving forward, that would be something we talked about beforehand. And by major improvements to the range or sheriff's office, again, that would, any new buildings, anything like that, obviously would be, would be discussed beforehand, before moving forward with it, so.
Major improvements, what do you consider to be major improvements to the range or sheriff's office?
Like the front lobby project I've got going now that obviously ended up falling under the ARPA. At the, at the range, it typically be a new building or something like that, if, if we're going to look for that.
So for those types of things, we're not really recommending or talking about recommending any type of a cost, is those would all come before the board.
Those would come for the board because they'd obviously be, anything, anything you do is going to be over $1,000 or $500 or whatever limit you want to set there, so.
Well, it's unfortunate we're short a couple of board members. I thought to maybe ask some additional questions of you, but I was going to say, are there any other questions? Obviously, you know, we don't take any action or weren't planning to in a work session. But I wondered if it wouldn't be a good idea to have Michelle, our finance director, come up with some amounts to kind of counter or at least, you know, finish or finalize the proposals that say dollar amounts and then see that the boards approve of those and try another work session. I guess, I don't know. What's your thoughts? Your thoughts, Tom? Tom?
I, I don't know. It's, you know, I'm sure over the years, some of this stuff he's talking about has been budgeted through their general fund under minor equipment or something. I kind of thought maybe we'd have some money that we could put towards the healthcare contract coming up with that huge 37, 40% increase. I don't know. We got to make sure we have the essentials covered courthouse and all this other stuff and it doesn't look like we're doing anything different what we did before. Yeah, we're going to see it, but it's going to be after the fact. So I, I don't know. I know over the years, we paid for different items in the jail for the inmates through tax dollars, repairs, adding this, that. That probably some of this money could have been used, but I don't know. I get your guys' thought and we'll go from there.
Well, as far as the, there is going to be a change a little, somewhat. I was going to say there's, there is this list of items that will come before us that were somewhat questionable or that the board could have questions on beforehand rather than after the fact and seeing them in a ledger. So I don't know, but it's like you said, there one of the three of you, Craig's I know missing and he was, like I said, supportive of the stopping the 6040 use for a while and we want to get that going as far as the collection and recovering those funds and get things back on track for that, but still wanting more discretion from the board. It seemed to me it was the decision of the group.
We're not collecting now?
Not actually. There's still funds coming in from payments that have been set up in the past. Over the last year, that, I mean, it's a very wide range monthly. It's been anywhere from 16 to $20,000 in the month. And I think last month, like 21,000 still came in on it.
What's your average normally? What's your average normally?
Like I said, over the, it varies greatly. It's, like I said, over the last year, it's been, I think, anywhere from $16,000 to $28,000 that have come in monthly. So we're still right in that. I think the big part we're going to see is it might take a while, because without us actively seeking out collections or threatening to take people to collections or doing civil actions, the things that would be filed are at least 30 to 60 days out on those. And that, we're just kind of going to start getting into that, where you might start seeing that fall off a little bit more. Right now, if we can get going again, we could pick back up and might not really notice too much of a blip in that.
Yeah, but like I stated before, it's a plus for everybody if the collections were going on. I mean, it benefits everybody, because if they don't go on, the math's going to be pretty simple. When we get to budget time, there may be cuts in the budget due to the fact that we got to pay for something that we were paying before. So like I said, it's, it's, it's an advantage to everybody that we continue collecting. Where we're not doing it now, we'll probably pay for it.
Well, that's one thing where I'm really hoping we can get action taken on it sooner or later and we can, you know, get this settled and get back to collecting. And, because the other part too, as we prepare our budget to bring to you for, for next fiscal year, it kind of helps us to know where we're going to be sitting, whether we're going to be able to use some of this for expenses or whether it's going to be used elsewhere too. So it would be beneficial to us as we come to you with our, our Board preparation for next year.
So if we put this on next week's agenda, you'd start immediately, or that would start immediately?
Yeah, well, as soon as there's, as soon as the Board takes action and, you know, we'll be happy to kick things back up.
Thank you. Anything, anything else? Any other questions or comments, Tom?
No, no, that's fine, thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks very much, Nate.
Thanks, Nate.
Item 11 is any reports or information from the Board?
Nope.
None from Dan, any from you, Tom?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, super. Guess we'll ask if there's a motion for adjournment.
I'll move.
Second.
And moved in second at all, in favor?
Aye.
A poll, meeting's adjourned.